Come on, Carl.
All right.
I'm counting. Twenty-four times it's gotta be cut this year.
Well, we're halfway.
That's what you, your motion was?
That was three dollar a gallon, yes. Yeah. No, it's five.
Oh, oh.
All right, let's go.
Motion, motion.
He didn't call the, he didn't call the board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And what time did you start it? I was standing on the thirty, seven thirty according to that, from what I can see of it.
Seven thirty-three.
Seven thirty-three.
So are we calling at seven thirty, thirty-two?
Thirty-three.
Roll call. Supervisor Penny Turner?
Here.
Flor, Kimberly Sharp, President of Accountant Four, Treasurer Lisa Moore?
Here.
Trustee Darryl Nichols?
Yeah.
Trustee Michael Finkowski?
Approval of agenda, has anybody got any additions, deletions? I love to know, ready to find anything. Seeing as none, I'll make a motion to approve your agenda.
Oh, second it.
Supervisor Turner, Second Supervisor Sharp, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First citizen stand.
I will set the happy assignment for Jerry.
Amanda.
Um, I just wanted to speak toward the planning commission appointment for tonight. As the board knows, because I emailed all of the board my application, I know Penny is the one that is in charge of appointing, but I wanted all of the board to be apprised of my, my application and my resume, my letter of intent. It was actually right around this time last year where I gave came in, met with Penny, and I gave her the same credentials. And just in case there was a vacancy that could come up on the PC, I wanted to show her that I was interested in helping them since I'm being a member on the PC. She had looked at my paper and kind of set it aside. She said, I, she knew she was, she knew I was qualified, but she was worried that she wouldn't have the support of the board. And I wanted to just personally speak to the board on that. I've attended every planning commission meeting, I've attended every board meeting, except for last year when I was having some health issues. But I, I still kept a price on everything that was going on. It, it's not just my knowledge that I feel confident in that I could be an asset to the planning commission, but it's because I wouldn't have to be brought up to date. And shoot, we've been working on this solar ordinance for what, three years now? So, oh, two? Okay. Well, I think it's more like two and a half.
June twenty-twenty.
Oh, okay. So, see, Darryl knows. But, and we were just talking before the meeting how
What minute?
we've, we've been through so, so many years of working through ordinances and how great we work together. And I think that I would do well, I would do better on the planning commission than I even did as an assistant recorded secretary. So I just wanted to, like I said, address the board. And I don't know what Penny's decision will be, but if it came up, I wanted to, to let you know that as soon as a planning commissioner walks through the door, they're not an individual. They do have their individual opinions, but they all work as a team, just, just as you, you do. You have to, you have to be a team player and be able to work together and, and come to agreements for, for the better of the community. And I, it would truly be an honor if I was chosen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did everybody get that email just a moment from?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, we've done approval of June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes. Anybody got any additions, deletions? Seeing as none, I'll make a motion to approve the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes.
Second.
Supervisor Turner, Second Supervisor Pincowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Supervisors report. Um, just a couple of things. I believe most of our roads are done with the grading and brining. And I do want to say they did a really good job on the brining this year. Um, the first mowing of the ditches is done. If you see that yours wasn't done, please let me know. Also, I've, in receipt of the life contract for renewal, I sent it to Bonnie for review and I will get her comments when I get them back to the board so that you can look at them. I've put the bids out for the parking lot and for the painting of the building. And also, I just want to make a note that I received several complaints about the drag rate running until three over the weekend. And I'm looking into it so that everybody knows that I'm not ignoring your complaints. And that's all I have.
I'll make a motion to accept supervisor's report.
I'll second it.
Supervisor Sharp, Second by a board, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I want to back up to the agenda. I forgot I wanted to add it, a couple of things. If we could go back to that. Um, we have a dangerous tree on Bramley Road. I need to add that. Under new business. And also, under new business number five, I'd want to add Cooper CBA hearing. Sorry about that, guys. I received my notes, so I missed that. So, I want to make another motion to approve the agenda as amended. Sorry. Supervisor Turner, Second by Pincowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Treasurers' report.
Okay, Treasurers' report is, all the taxes went out in July fifth. I hand delivered it to the Dundee Post Office. I'm, I got some on my desk, so there's witness if the taxes are coming in. My balance on the tax account I left in there was fourteen hundred eighty-two dollars and seventy-three cents. In our fire fund, we have two hundred forty-eight thousand five forty-nine thirty-four. In our road fund, we have eight thousand three hundred twelve dollars and fifty-one cents. The sewer is five thousand six eighty-three fifty. And in our general fund, we got, we still have the hundred and fifty, hundred and fifty-three, six oh one purple money in there.
Yeah, and then there was a little.
We just received another, our, our, other batch for one fifty-four, two fifteen ninety-four. So, that brings the general fund total as of today is eight hundred eighty-seven thousand two fifty-four and twenty-four cents. That is the money. The CDs haven't changed much. I mean, I, I don't know if I should do that every single month because they're only moving by a couple of cents, but they're still on there.
Are we gonna move the arca money into their own account?
I gotta do that, guys. Now that we got the other batch, sure might as well do it all at one time.
Is that it?
That's it.
I'll make a motion to approve the Treasurers' report. Supervisor Turner, Second by Sharp, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Clerk's report.
Um, I posted on Facebook earlier, they started stating a send out of the way for anybody who is interested in working on the election. There's a short video that you can watch that tells you a little bit about it. And then if you want to have more information or talk to your clerk, which you could just pick up the phone and call me and I would answer all your questions. Um, I put that on on Facebook. So if you're interested in working on election, please let me know. Uh, we're always looking for election workers. Our current election workers have worked before us for years and they are greatly appreciated. But, um, they are part of an aging population, so I do need to have some new people come in. No offense, Joanne, please. I know you're laughing at me and I'm not trying to, I'm trying not to be insensitive.
Get her, Joanne.
How's something you tell me? Because, you know, you're two of my favorite people. Um, but I'm just putting it out there that we need election workers, you know? What better way to learn how to election work than to work with? Um, I am also getting absentee voter applications back. Um, ballots are going out, no problem. However, when you get them, you'll notice at the top, they're yellow on the top, and I marked them all in yellow because you need to make a choice. You need to make a choice for August second, or you need to make a choice for November. So if you don't want one for August, don't check that box. And you want one for November, check that box. If you don't want it for anything, don't return it. But please make a choice because if you don't, I'm going to send it back to you. I've already done that quite a few times. Um, and that's all on here?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the Clerk's report.
Second.
Supervisor Turner, Second by Nichols, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Building Department, we had a total of eight permits. Amounting of six thousand four hundred seventy-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. We had a total of seventeen inspections. I'll make a motion to approve the Building Department report.
I'll second it.
Supervisor Turner, Second by Moore, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Assessors' report. The audit is still pending. The July Board of Review will meet on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two at five PM. That's all she's got. I'll make a motion to approve the Assessors' report.
Aye.
Supervisor Turner, Second by Pincowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I don't see a ZA report.
I didn't get one in my email before, and I like, like, five minutes to three, so.
Planning Commission report.
All right, so what we had on our agenda were a couple of things. One being the, uh, the solar ordinance that's been ongoing since June of twenty twenty. So, um, we tabled it, and we tabled it because, um, of an overlay district. We've got a lot of the language done, um, but we still need an overlay district. So, um, I'm bringing it to the board to run this by Kibisky, uh, somebody that's a professional and knows what's going on with whatever needs to happen within a solar overlay district. And, uh, I'm not qualified to draw up the solar overlay district. And I don't know how many people on that planning commission are. But it didn't seem like, uh, that was going anywhere. You know, some people, we, we took a vote, we had six people. Three wanted it one way, three wanted it the other, and a few different things. So, uh, that's where it stands right now. We're looking for, uh, Kibisky or another professional to engage to get that solar overlay district done and go from there, because that's as far as we can go right now with it. And I know the moratorium is up on that in August. And I'm thinking by the time Kibisky or another engineering firm gets done with that, you're gonna be in August because we're just not gonna have the time to, to do that. So the board's gonna have to make a decision on that as well. What do you want to do with that? Because that moratorium is up the, um,
August the eleventh, I think it is.
Eleven fourteen, whatever it is.
Is that before our meeting?
It's after our meeting, I believe. Our meeting is.
I have any concerns on this, uh, this whole ordinance, on some of the wording still. Um, like land mass percentage of use for solar, that, I think that needs to be addressed. I don't think it needs to be on Ag one or Ag two, only commercial and industrial.
That was brought up at the planning commission meeting because I was listening to it in the other room.
And I think land value guarantee, because I very experienced a situation at a company where they lost twenty thousand dollars of value with one right behind their yard. And if they're gonna do this, they need to put a guarantee in their contracts that they won't lose value. And to do something about it if they do lose value, if someone sells their house. And also setbacks.
So, so land mass percentage?
Yep.
Land value guarantee?
Yep.
What was the other one? Setbacks and what?
Uh, no, um, no solar panel firms on Ag one and Ag two, only on commercial and industrial.
So land mass.
We might have to do an extensive moratorium.
We're gonna have to, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
So land mass percentage, land value guarantee, setback, Ag one, Ag two?
Yes.
Did you say?
No, not on, not on them.
Did you say something about PA one sixteen after or during some of that? Did I hear you mention something?
No. Yeah, and that's in the past, I have, but yeah, so I want to protect PA one sixteen for sure. Ag one and Ag two, yeah.
Now, if this is the direction the board wants to go, why are we gonna send it to Kibisky and spend that money on overlay?
We already, we already have a, uh, this letter from July nineteenth from the solar overlay district that was sent there by the previous zoning administrator. But for here, we all, the board got it.
And he approved it, didn't he, the?
Yeah, it was, the main thing is, is the floodplain, but saying that they just have to go through the state uh, to get higher permits or to put it in the floodplain.
But, but if we're talking about land mass, land value guarantee, setbacks, Ag one and Ag two, that letter didn't encompass any of those things.
No, they're not.
You know what I mean?
True.
It didn't encompass any of those. So that's what the concerns of the planning commission were, and that's what I was charged to bring back to the board.
Yep.
Um, we had, we've had discussion to nauseam. You know? And that's what it's been. That's, I mean, there's people in here that know how much work has gone in to this solar ordinance slash overlay. It's unbelievable. And, um, until all the concerns of this board are addressed, because it's not gonna pass if the board can't agree to make it pass. And if these are the concerns of the board, then they need to be drawn into that overlay district is what we come up with in the planning commission meeting last Wednesday. And I believe that to be honest and truthful, that, um, the board's gonna be good with what comes before them. And if there's concerns, they need to be brought up now so I can take it back like Lisa just brought up because I'm pretty sure, you know, we talked about setbacks, and the setbacks, um, didn't come up. It, it came up, but it wasn't addressed and written in there as a final, I don't believe. Because we didn't know what the overlay district was gonna be.
Now Lisa, how did, where did you get your final copy from the planning commission?
My final copy.
Because that would be helpful if we all had what you've got worked on so far.
She just come up with these.
I know, and I, I don't have the.
Okay, I.
I don't have the final one.
I'll, I'll, I'll send it to everybody.
Yeah, the last one that you guys, where you're back with it.
I, I, yeah, I just got it today.
Okay.
So I'll send it out to everyone. I'll, I'll send it to the entire board. But I can tell you that these four things are really not addressed in that if they're an issue for board members. Ag one and Ag two is in there as a, there, there's really, everything is on the table because the overlay is gonna address some of that. Now, if the board says commercial, industrial, we know where the overlay's going. If the board says, you know, Ag one, Ag two, everything's in play, then we know where the overlay can go on that.
See, this is my, my reasoning. Why do we need an overlay if we're gonna restrict it to where it can be? Why are we spending the money for Kibisky to do an overlay for two sections that we already know where it is? If we're saying that we only want it in commercial and industrial, um, why do we need an overlay?
Do you know that you can put it in commercial, industrial?
No.
No?
That's why we need to engage an engineer. Because if there's commercial and, or industrial, but Kibisky comes back and says, hey, you can't put it in this one or this one. The only thing you can put it in is here, or you can't put it anywhere. That's why we wanted a professional opinion.
Well, the thing is, the thing is, I have is, if we create an overlay district, it doesn't go through the whole township because you can rezone to be commercial or industrial.
It has to make sense to be able to do that. You can't put commercial in the middle of Ag. That just can't be done.
I, I understand.
Or industrial.
I understand, but.
Well, that was one of the issues that the planning commission had, was once you put fifty or a hundred acres or two hundred acres, is that, is that ag or is that commercial now? That's one of the things that you've got brought up at the planning commission. So I don't know how many folks on this board seen that planning commission meeting, but if you want to go back and look at the last one or two, and you will understand, just what issues are in that room. And, you know.
Or outside that room.
I need something, a direction on what to give Kibisky. What, what do we want to give Kibisky to put for this overlay? I don't want to just send this to him, hey, we need an overlay district. I need direction on where we want to go with this. We only want it in commercial and industrial, or do we want him to direct us to tell us where we can have it?
So I'm gonna tell you what we did at the planning commission meeting. Because we couldn't get a majority vote on where it went from the beginning.
I know, I was listening.
Couldn't get it. So what we did was, you know, do we believe that land mass should be in there? Do we believe that it should be restricted to commercial or industrial? Because if that's the question, and what we did was we took a, a vote among the planning commissioners. Okay, who wants this? Whether it ended up three or four two, that's how we got to where we were at on that. That, that's what we done. We took a vote because we have beat this and beat this and beat it to death. I, I'm done beating it. So if these things are important to the people sitting on this board right now.
What was that again? What was the four things?
Land mass percentage, land value guarantee, setbacks, Ag one, Ag two, PA one sixteen. I've got all three of, that's.
All for, for no, only in commercial and industrial.
So. Well, I will send these concerns to Kibisky and ask him about a overlay district. Um, and see what he gets, misses back. But I do think we're gonna have to extend our moratorium, so I will get that. So I will get that, um, drawn up so that we can do that next month before it expires. Yeah, because I know Kibisky isn't gonna get this back that quickly.
No, I know he's not. So when it goes to Kibisky, I, I will give you the latest, uh, ordinance that we have. And I guess these questions, if other people have questions, we need to send him all those questions so we can put this to rest.
Can we, uh, be like, this time next week, so if I have any questions, I can email them to you or the rest of the board can email?
Well, we've been working on this two years. It'd be nice if you could do it like within the next eight or so.
Okay.
I mean, come on.
I need a copy of the latest.
I, I will, I will, I will send that to you right now and the rest of the board.
Yeah, send it to the whole board. I, um, how about by Thursday?
Fair enough.
You give me all your stuff that you want addressed or questioned, and I will get it to Kibisky. Darryl, go ahead.
I understand where you guys are going with this, but, um, but if you send him basically a blank check and you don't really have a whole lot to go off of, other than give you about twenty or thirty different scenarios, which is gonna cost the township a lot of money, when at the end of the day, I'm sure you guys kind of already have somewhat of an opinion. So would it make more sense to kind of give him a baseline to start with, like? Because I'm sure a lot of you guys already kind of lean one way or another, or however you guys feel. But like, if for some reason, like you guys kind of limit down all this, and then basically give him a list and say, this is what we're wanting, can you make us an overlay district with this in mind? Instead of giving him this open book and then it comes, and we're just spinning our wheels. That's kind of like what Darryl was saying before.
See, that's where I'm coming from.
Spinning our wheels, we're getting nowhere because nobody works with it.
That's exactly what I just said.
See, that's where I'm coming from. We already had an overlay district drawn up that Kibisky approved. He's got that letter. Why are we reinventing the will?
See, that's where, that's where I'm going with this, and is we add it, you know? I mean, granted.
So, because this is the biggest issue.
It's changing, it's changing between, is it gonna be on Ag one, Ag two, or commercial and industrial?
That's the issue, because some of that was Ag one, Ag two.
Yes, it was. And it may have been PA one sixteen.
It may have been, I don't, I don't remember.
I can tell you that there are individuals that are for it on one of them and against it on, on all of that. You know, and for whatever reasons that they want to use, I mean, that's the reasons that they have, but like I said, we sat through a planning commission Wednesday night last week, and it come up three, 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 three.
But I want direction from everybody, just like Joe said. I don't want a blank slate. Do we want it on Ag one, Ag two, or don't we?
No.
Do we want it on PA one sixteen or don't we?
So here's the thing. That planning commission can come up with whatever it wants to in this solar ordinance. When that solar ordinance comes to the store and they say, okay, here's the solar ordinance, and we look at it, and it's got, whether it's got commercial and industrial only, or it's got Ag one, Ag two, and the whole township's available, I can guarantee you that you're not gonna get five people on this board to say yes to everything that's in that. So what the planning commission said is, they want some direction from this board when it comes to that. So whether it's PA one sixteen, Ag one, Ag two, we can move forward with that. Or whether it's commercial, industrial, we can move forward with that. That's what I was saying about taking a vote. If you want to take a vote on this board, Penny, and say, hey, who wants it in PA one sixteen, Ag one, Ag two, go from there.
What, uh, what changed from the overlay district that this board already approved of to, to incorporate into the ordinance? Because all of a sudden, it's changed that it's approved.
That overlay district didn't get approved. That'll, the board approved an overlay district. Ron drew that overlay district that included floodplain and stuff.
We presented it to you.
Yeah, right.
Presented it. Because we, we as a board approved five.
An over, an overlay, not that overlay, an overlay district.
But it was this, what, this was what we voted on it right here that he approved.
Mike, Mike, hold on one second here. So what happened is that got sent over to the planning. Well, first, he brought it up into your guys' meeting. I'm sure you guys recall.
Yeah, he did.
And you guys voted that, yes, we do agree we need a, a solar overlay district. Not necessarily that. You guys said that we did need one.
Right.
So it went back to us, right?
Yep.
Well, the planning commission kind of voted it down altogether, which, that was, that was another issue because you guys required us to do a, a solar overlay district, but the planning commission voted not to do it, basically. So it came back to you guys, and that's whenever that one came about.
This was, this was, this is what we, what.
Who was that dated?
Uh, this one is, no, this was by nineteen twenty-one.
I know that, I know that the planning commission never approved that solar overlay district, and I can guarantee it because nobody was on board with it.
I, I sat through it. I sat through.
Because some of them, half, half of them didn't want it, uh, you know, like, didn't want it on commercial, whatever. And then the other half wanted it, you know, it's open to the entire township.
Yeah.
So I know that that never got approved by the planning commission or the board.
No.
Well, I would actually have the piece of when the chairman had said that he didn't want to use that one because it was a disgruntled ex-employee that drew it up, okay? So obviously, it was acknowledged that this was the overlay district that was gonna happen.
That overlay district never happened.
No. He used, he came to the board with that without asking us, and that's how all that came about.
He comes to the board with that overlay district without insulting anybody.
Yes. And then you guys approved a.
Overlay district.
And overlay district.
Not necessarily that one. You guys sent it back to us to work on or kind of come up with our own, but that was like a baseline, I guess.
And I was at that meeting where you guys said, no, I don't think so.
Yes, that's correct.
Now, the land value guarantee, the setbacks and stuff, that's gonna be in the ordinance, so. Now, when I send this to Kibisky, we need to be on the same page on what we want.
Well, let's take a vote right now, then, and find out.
Yeah, because I can't, I, I can't see, keep sending this, keep sending this.
That's right.
We're not making any decisions. We're just going back and forth.
Well, you got, uh, Ag one, Ag two, PA one sixteen, commercial, industrial.
I mean, eventually it's gonna have to go to. It's gonna have to go to Bonnie for legal review, once we get it all done. I know she's approv, she's looked at the, the first one that you guys worked on, but a lot has changed since then.
Absolutely.
And people got educated, the whole, everything all the time. And people got educated, the whole, everyone's all the time.
That's very true.
So I mean, it's, whatever we come up with is gonna have to go back through technical review, because there's so much change that.
Right.
I don't wanna get in a trick bag that we've changed stuff that technically we can't.
You would, you wouldn't happen to have a zoning map available there, would you?
A what?
It's back there on the back wall, right back there. See it? Can you see it, Michael?
I can see it.
There is very, there is very little commercial zoned in this township. You're never gonna be able to put solar on commercial in this township.
That is so, that was the planning commission while I was listening.
If you.
Well, yes, yes, they can.
Zoned, you can get it rezoned.
Uh, John, yes, they can.
They can, but they go for rezoning.
Okay. Yeah, that's correct.
A, a, and, and, under the township rules, if, say you have parcel A, it's commercial or industrial, and it's contiguous with another piece of farmland right next door, you can go and the township, okay, cannot deny it because it's contiguous. You opened up a district, so anybody that's got money, if there's a commercial thing, they can come to get it rezoned, and if township doesn't, that, that's gonna be a legal battle because it's precedent.
Yeah.
Okay? It's just like going ag one to ag two. If you're, if you're butted up, your property, your ag one, and you're butted up to ag two, you can go in and get your property zoned ag two. No questions asked because it's contiguous, long as you're adjacent to it. And it, it goes to every, every um, every zone.
Yeah, anything.
I mean, so you gotta watch what you want, you're trying to restrict it, but you, you're not gonna be able to restrict it. There's one piece, they can buy, if somebody's got enough money income, they can buy a whole dang subdivision and tear it down, put solar in thing, they can do a dump. So you gotta watch what you're doing or trying to do, and you have to be realistic.
But with.
But it has to make sense.
The solar, or the, the solar overlay district would limit that from happening if, if it was only allowed in that particular area.
It has to make sense, it has to be approved.
Yes, you could turn it, like, if they decided to make it go commercial, they could do it in some of that district, correct?
I'm just saying, you guys are trying to restrict, and all I'm saying is you're not looking at the big picture of all, how all zoning works. And I might be off a little bit cuz I haven't been on that planning commission, I haven't really studied it. But back when we did, and I'll use a prime example, is the uh, the federally farms, when he split all that property off, he came in front of the board cuz it was ag one, but adjacent or um contiguous with the two. Township board tried to stop it cuz he didn't want it, and he won. They went to the county, the county said, you can't do that, okay? So I'm just saying, you have to be careful of what you want to accomplish, cuz you might not be able to accomplish it anyway. That is the only thing I'm saying. I haven't done the research.
But it has to make sense to be able to do it, though.
Makes sense to who, you?
No, it has to just make sense that, I was told that it has to make sense when it comes to assessing if someone's changed his zoning, it has to make sense to be able to do it. You can't just take a section that used to be ag one or ag two and turn it into industrial, commercial.
If it butts up to something that we have in this township right now, it's not you making the decision.
You can't.
What makes sense to you isn't the law, okay? That's what I'm getting at. You're trying to, you're trying to pigeonhole it and say, well, we wanna keep it right here. There is things, if it's contiguous, if I have a piece of commercial property here, the property right next door, I can get rezoned to commercial. If it's industrial, I can get that property, and then the next guy can do it. And the next, as long as it's contiguous, you set the zone, you said this piece of property is here. You gotta have room to expand. So you already set the ground rules. You set precedent.
Little question for you.
I don't, like I said, no, don't ask me anymore. I, I'm just throwing out, you have the research, I haven't done the research.
So, so. I. Look, just look, Ag one, Ag one, Ag two, guy in the middle, can he change that to commercial?
Ag two.
Or he, so he can't, so is one, is it commercial or industrial?
Okay, if you have ag two, ag one, and ag one, this guy can change the ag two.
Okay, but he can't.
This guy over here.
He can't change.
He can't change the ag two unless the guy in the middle does.
So it's still the guy, so the, the middle man can't change it to commercial or industrial?
No, he has, he, it has to be contiguous. So if, if the first parcel is commercial, the second guy, ag one, he can go commercial. And the next guy next to him, he can go, as long as it's contiguous, cuz you set the boundaries. And all I'm saying is, you need to ask those questions. I am not a expert, but I'm, you're trying to, you're trying to target an area and try to keep it contained, there's ways around it.
Lisa, you're looking at from the assessing part, assessing and zoning is two different things, okay?
I know that, I'm aware.
So that don't matter on the assessing part at all.
Well, I, like I say, I'm not an expert. I know a little bit about it, but things changed since I've been involved in doing that. But those are the questions you need to ask, because what you're trying to accomplish, you might not be able to accomplish what you're trying to do.
But that's also one reason why they're trying to come up with a baseline and send it over so that they would have those answers.
Oh, absolutely.
Cuz I feel like the solar overlay district would, I do agree with you.
I think that we should uh, 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 get the questions together and ask Bonnie or Kabisky, you know, what, take a vote or whatever we wanna do, uh, what the board sees, and then send it over, is this feasible? Versus, we wanna create it off of this.
So you wanna ask for feasibility versus making.
Creating, yeah, I mean, because like Daryl said, you're just handing a blank check, I mean, how much, I mean, we, granted, we've already spent money on this, but I get we have, we've changed, you know, our way and learned, we've all been educated a lot more, but instead of saying we just want it here, is it feasible to have it just here with what our zoning map already has? Because there isn't a lot of commercial, we have no industrial, and I'm looking at the parcels that would actually jump into it, like, it could be here, but then it's like, okay, how much are you really gonna change? I mean, we got some. Yeah, I see that. But that's what I'm saying.
What happens with that map?
Ag two, this is all ag two. We got some ag one, we got three or four little commercials. I see four on here.
This is their zone.
So I, 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 I mean, just, just my own person, I think you guys should even look at the map, to tell you the truth. I think you guys should just come up with what you guys are thinking and say, is this plausible? And then let them create something and then kind of, at least you have a baseline. Cuz right now, you're trying to pick this or that, well, they might say, well, yeah, you can actually extend this from here to there, so maybe let's do the solar overlay this way, and it meets what you guys have in mind.
See, that's, see, that's why I, I.
You know, that's what I look at, at least you guys are saving something, like, cuz you guys are limiting them bound to what options they have, and then they're gonna come back and say, well, these options.
See, this is what I'm looking at, is that map there, when they said that they wanted to get it tied into our main transmission line, and now there's three quarters of our lower southeast corner that's this big, like, so people can see, this whole section right here is they want solar over here. When they were coming in here in the beginning and saying they want this section. So I say we stay with the original one, because this has changed from in the last June of, when Daryl had said, to a little ch, little, little tiny solar to huge solar.
Can't you put a number on the acres on the overlay?
And that's why staying with this original overlay, because that encompasses what they originally stated over there.
Okay, well, then it also goes back to the same question they both said, are you gonna allow it on uh, PA one sixteen? That's shown on PA one sixteen.
Okay, so it's not a PA one sixteen.
So, so you can, so you can kind of have.
You can pull, you can pull your plan out of PA one sixteen.
Okay, but what about commercial or industrial? That was another question. That's, you know, can you, can you convert that over, like what he was saying, attachment, I'm pretty sure you can. You can go one after another.
All right, these are the options that's on the table then. Either we allow it in ag one, ag two, PA one sixteen, and we don't, or we go commercial and industrial only.
See, that's where I think it's gonna be exclusionary zoning, if you go with commercial, because we, I mean, look at our commercial and our, you know, or industrial.
But.
I mean, that's exclusionary zoning. I mean, if you, if you put, okay, just say, just hear me out. If you say that you add the twenty percent, okay, or whatever percentage that we want, okay, I mean, we, on this land, and there's a hundred foot setbacks, okay? Or fifty foot setbacks, show me where, anywhere on this, on, on here, it's going to actually cover that it's going to, you know. Then you're setting up for a, a whole different thing when you're exclusionary zoning, okay? Because now you're including it, okay? You're allowing it, but how can you allow it? But you can't.
That whole ordinance book is exclusionary zoning. All of it.
Yeah.
There's not anything in there that's not exclusionary. You can't do this in ag one, you can't do that in ag two, you can't do that in commercial. That whole book is full of that. That horse is done beat to death. Exclusionary, whatever. We need to figure out what we wanna send to Kabisky and go from there.
Yep.
And a few things, I mean, we've talked about it for, what, twenty minutes, thirty minutes tonight?
I feel that, I feel that. Yeah.
I've talked about it for over two years, and I'm really, really wanna move forward with this.
I also wanna make that mention as well.
Now, like Penny said, Penny said, there's two things you're gonna say, what was, what was those?
Ag one, ag two, PA one sixteen, yes or no, or commercial and industrial.
Okay.
And then whi, whichever way we go, we'll send it and get a legal opinion and get an overlay.
Do we make a decision on it? Can we use legal on it?
We're gonna have to, we can't, we just can't keep discussing and doing.
No, we can't. I'm done with.
I don't make a decision to make it in commercial, industrial.
Second.
Move by Moore, second by Pinkowski for commercial and industrial. For overlay, correct? You want overlay in that areas, for that areas.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? What she carries. All right, I will get that to Kabisky, and also if you could get me the final um, planning commission that you've been working on.
We have to push a report to, by the way.
I'm sorry?
I, I'm not even done yet.
Yeah, we're still working on this. Um, I need the, the final solar, um, and then take it back to the um, if you see the word about the land value guarantee, setbacks, and land mass percentage.
I got them written down. Got them written down.
Okay, Daryl, what else you got?
I can cross the. Um, we had some uh, folks come in with concerns about blasting over at Ag Industries.
Oh, yeah, I heard of that.
There are rocks that are ending up in these folks' fields, huge boulders. Um, Mike Neville has been made aware of the situation, he was supposed to get ahold of OSHA, the mining, whomever, um, does that. So it's a huge issue. There's some huge issues with Ag Industries, not only about the blasting, but also a berm that they were supposed to continue out on that they haven't done. So I'm just making you guys aware that that'll be an ongoing issue when they come back for their annual review.
Do you know what day that last was?
No, I don't.
Do you know who the complainant was?
Who the complainant was?
That the stones.
Paul.
That the stones.
Oh, they were here. It was.
Do you know who they were?
Yeah, Paul Harnika was here and uh, is it Brian Rogers?
Yep.
Yes.
They were both here.
And I think I heard something about pictures.
Yeah, Paul Harnika had pictures of the, the debris in the field, and I know Doug Darling has been in contact with um,
A.T.
Some folks at the state level or maybe even federal level on blasting and stuff as recent as today.
Now, is Mr. Harnika gonna send us those pictures?
He probably can.
So we have them in file?
Yeah, Dan may have them.
All right, I'll ask him. That way we can have them in the file.
Well, Mike probably does have them, but he's not here right now to pull this in today.
Yeah, Mike may have them.
I'll check with him.
So I, I know there was an issue about a funeral or something that he, he couldn't um, get, get on it.
His, his stepfather passed away.
Right, he couldn't get on it, so I, I know Doug has um, made some phone calls as well.
Anything else?
Nope, that's, that's all I got. See how easy that was?
I'll make a motion to approve planning commission report.
Second.
Move by Turner, second by Moore, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? What she carries. Reading of monthly disbursements.
All righty, I'm gonna do them all at once and then we can vote them on all, if that's fine what we do. Um, general fund is first. There were thirty-six thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars in vendor checks written from the general fund. Um, that H and H sign was the um, one that we had approved last month with the sign up front, so I wrote a deposit check for that, so that's that sixteen thousand dollar one. Um, payroll for this pay period was fifteen thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-six cents, bringing disbursements from the general fund to fifty-two thousand one hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty-six cents. The road fund, um, disbursements were only for the streetlights, that was twenty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. Um, the sewer fund, there was a check written to the village of Mayby for three thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. And then for the fire fund, um, there were two checks written, one to LMR, one to Mylan, or, um, and the total for that was nineteen thousand seven seventy, oh seven, so the total disbursements for all funds, the general, the sewer, the fire, and the road, was seventy-five thousand three hundred and se, twenty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. All right, so back to the general fund.
I'll make a motion to approve expenditures in the amount of fifty-two thousand one hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty-six cents out of the general fund.
I'll second it.
Move by Turner, second by Moore, roll call.
Supervisor Penny Turner?
Yes.
Clerk Sharp, that's myself, yes. Treasurer Lisa Moore, yes. Trustee Daryl Nichols?
Yes.
And trustee Michael Pinkowski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, sewer fund, I'll make the motion to approve three thousand three hundred and sixty dollars expenditure of the sewer fund.
I'll second.
Move by Turner, second by Nichols, roll call.
Trustee Michael Pinkowski?
Yes.
Treasurer Lisa Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Daryl Nichols?
Yes.
Supervisor Penny Turner?
Yes.
Clerk Sharp, that's myself, yes. Motion carried.
Road fund, I'll make a motion to approve the amount of twenty dollars and thirty-five cents expenditure from road fund.
I'll second.
Move by Turner, second by Sharp, roll call.
Trustee Daryl Nichols?
Yes.
Supervisor Penny Turner?
Yes.
Treasurer Lisa Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Michael Pinkowski?
Yes.
Clerk Sharp, that's myself, uh, yes. Motion carried.
I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure of nineteen thousand seven hundred seventy-eight dollars and seven cents from the fire fund.
I'll second it.
Move by Turner, second by Moore, roll call.
Treasurer Lisa Moore?
Yes.
Supervisor Penny Turner?
Yes.
Trustee Michael Pinkowski?
Yes.
Clerk Sharp, that's myself, yes. Trustee Daryl Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Total, total monthly expenses of seventy-five thousand three hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Moving on, unfinished business generator quotes. I sent everybody a copy of these quotes last week for you to review and look at, and if you have any questions, let me know. If you've got any questions, so I'm assuming that. Nobody had any.
Well, I did have one.
Mm-hmm.
Why do they have the alternate of diesel if we have gas? Um, natural gas is not rely on power like, you know, um, so I don't know why they would put.
I don't either. I told him we were gonna go with diesel, but.
I, when I was sitting there, I asked him to go ahead and put both options just for consideration.
Okay. Okay.
I was just wondering, cuz I, I have a Jenny at my house, and I use regular gasoline, and we don't have none of the gas.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the only reason. Yeah, that's the only reason I put it in there, yeah. Was because, you know, he asked me, which I wanted, I said, I probably would, we would probably prefer natural gas. I said, would you go ahead, you know, since you're writing up an estimate, go ahead and put it in for diesel too, that way we can look at both options. But I can't see paying what is fourteen thousand dollar difference.
Yeah.
You know?
They're all pretty much comparable except for the third one with the trans star. Um, he comes in at fifty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. We have one for seventy-four thousand seven hundred twenty-five. And then we have one for seventy-seven thousand two hundred and fifty. And I think the differences is the type of generator, mainly. One's a Kohler, one's a Cummins, and.
The other one's a generator, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think when you get to that level of uh, backup generators, they're all pretty comparable.
I know I have a, a generator in my house that I can use.
I would like to know why he's, you know, so much.
That much lower?
Their plant brand is just substantial.
That is huge.
The price of the generators, the unit itself.
Did they give any details? I didn't see that in the email.
Any what?
Ten months, huh, ten months at least.
All of them, so I, yeah.
Yeah.
All of them, right.
And we have to have a. And we have to have a deposit down in order to lock this in?
So...
And if the gener- generator ten months from now costs more, we're locked in at this price and they will eat the, the difference.
And, and, you know, two of them are eighty kilowatts and the one's a seventy kilowatt, you know? And, and the one eighty kilowatt is the Generac that they come in nineteen thousand cheaper.
Oh, that's a Kohler.
It is?
Yeah, right up there.
So the Generac is cheaper?
It says Generac.
Oh, now.
No, the, the Kohler is the seventy-four, seven twenty-five.
Yeah, but I'm saying that's the...
Eighty kilowatt too.
That, it's a seventy, I thought.
The Cummins is a seventy.
Yeah, the seventy.
The seventy is the Cummins.
Yes. And, and for seventy-seven thousand.
Yeah.
And then the other one, the Kohler, is eighty kilowatts as well.
Yeah, it's seventy-four. The, the one at seven, the one at seventy, that's why I'm saying it's twenty thousand dollars higher than the, uh, the eighty.
I know this one doesn't, the TransStar doesn't include the bollards, I called and asked him about that. The Adrian Electric includes three concrete bollards, which is the things that go on to protect it from anybody ramming into it.
I think for twenty thousand dollars, we could probably get, uh, somebody to put three bollards in. Could probably get a dumpster built. You could surround that in a lot cheaper than that.
Are you gonna build it?
No.
I was gonna say, the bricklayer speaks.
Yeah, just saying.
So was I.
That's a, that's a, that's a lot of money for three bollards.
Unless they're made of like gold or something, I'd be proud of it.
I didn't see anything different with the...
I didn't either.
We also, we also have to take into consideration how they're gonna run the lines, how they're gonna put stuff in. Um, and you look at those estimates, look at how they say that they're gonna do it, they're gonna, you know, some of them, they're just gonna run the lines and there's no repairs up the sidewalks, uh, or anything like that. You know, and we have to have the boxes changed on the powder wall, you know, and, and stuff. So, you have to take all of that into consideration.
Oh, I know, it's all gonna be up to code.
Well, it's not on the code, it's, it's gonna be, uh, up to us to finish what they start. You know, so you really have to pay attention to their, their quotes, you know, on what they're gonna do.
Yeah, I mean, when you, when you got a one-page quote, you know?
That's why I was so impressed with the Generac, actually. They sent us a book.
Yeah.
Yes, they did.
They did. And they're the, they're the cheapest one.
Yeah, I've never, I've never seen that. And I do know the parts, parts availability, uh, you know, if something happens, you do have, have problems. This is what I couldn't understand was with the Kohler and with the Cummins, there are waiting lists already for repair parts. With Generac, there's not. And the Generac is twenty grand cheaper.
Yeah.
And, and to me, their quote included more with, with the, the...
For an eighty kilowatt generator?
And, and they're, you know...
I'll make a motion to go with TransStar.
Second.
In the amount of fifty-five thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars.
God, you love spending money like that.
This is federal money we're spending.
That's good.
I'm not, uh, like I said, I'm trying to spend this money, I'm not gonna do that.
Whatever we don't spend, we give back.
Yep.
We have a party.
I don't think that qualifies.
So move by Turner, second by Nichols, roll call.
Alright. So you're, you were about to go with the Generac for the fifty-five thousand eight hundred ninety-seven?
The TransStar. I'll know the file tomorrow and get it off, and it works.
Good, because, uh, their quotes only get for thirty days and they give it to you June fourteenth.
I told him I'd be cutting it short, he knew that, so...
Are, are we gonna credit card payment assumption, subject to your signature service?
We don't have a credit card that, uh, there's, that, that we have any kind of balance on for that one, so, uh...
It's gonna be a check.
Okay, trustee Darryl Nichols?
Yes.
Treasurer Lisa Moore?
Yes.
Supervisor Penny Turner?
Yes.
Trustee Michael Pinkowski?
Yes.
Clerk Sharp, that's myself, yes. Motion carried.
Number two, compensation committee. As you all are aware, I've been for months trying to get some people to volunteer for the compensation committee. I contacted our attorney, Bondi, and our options are, because we can't find anybody, that we can just, um, do by resolution to dissolve the committee. Um, then the board will take upon themselves by resolution to do our own wages. I really don't wanna go that route, but I have no other options. So I'm putting it out there one last time, if anybody is interested on the compensation committee, let me know. The only stipulation is you cannot work for any government entity to be on that board, and that's a state rule. So, I will give it another month to see what I get and, um, and work for the elections we can.
Oh, okay, oh.
Yeah, I already tried that one, I checked on that.
Yep, no election workers, as they would work for the township.
Oh.
So, that's, that's where I'm at with that, so, like I said, I really don't wanna go that route, but this board has not had a raise since, I think, oh nine.
Yep.
It's been a while, so... And we're probably one of the most townships in county, and...
You are.
So I'm just putting it out there, so anybody's interested, please let me know. Number three, Mylan area fire department budget. You're probably wondering why I'm bringing this back again, because we already proved it. But, in order for the, um, full-time position budget to go through, all the townships had to approve it. The city of Mylan did not approve it.
Okay, I know that.
So, we have to go back and approve the lower without the full-time. So I make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three Mylan area fire department budget in the amount of four hundred ninety-four thousand and ninety dollars.
Second.
Move by Turner, second by Pinkowski.
No problems?
And that was the only reason why it fell, because one person, one township, one city, the city didn't approve it, so. They had to give you an amount, so...
C city.
Yes, C city.
The one that Doug was proposing it in the first place, coming sort of...
Yeah.
Treasurer Lisa Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Michael Pinkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Darryl Nichols?
Yes.
Clerk Sharp, that's myself, yes. Supervisor Penny Turner?
Yes. Motion carries. Number four, Mylan area fire department at-large appointment. It is our turn to have an at-large, um, person on the Mylan Fire Department board. That person has to live within the Mylan Fire Department area and be a registered voted, a voter. So I'm requesting to appoint Barbara Henley as this at-large appointment, she's agreed that she would do it.
Second.
Move by Turner, second by Pinkowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five, Phil ordinance. I've been, um, reviewing all the ordinances that we have passed in terms of confirm that they all were published properly. So far, the, the Phil ordinance, I found, was not published correctly. So, I got ahold of Bondi and she advised me, because it's already had a public hearing, it's already been approved by us once. We can approve it and then we have to publish it in the paper as required.
Aye.
Before it can be, um, adopted by the township. And if I find any others, I will be bringing them to the board.
So that was the bits that I had for that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. It was approved, I think, back in December, December, but it, and it had a public hearing. So, everything has been unpropped, except for the, um, publishing, the hearing allowed it. You do not have to start all over, because it did have a public hearing and everything. So, and it's been within a year. So I make a motion to approve the Phil ordinance, section five point six oh eight.
Second.
Move by Turner, second by Nichols, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And did you see that that gets published?
Yes, I will.
Number six, grant budget balance. Everybody requested that I give them a balance on what we were doing with the grant money. Um, and the story as the actual amount we had at the end of last fiscal year was a hundred thirty-two thousand seven hundred dollars. So far, we have spent twenty-six thousand eight hundred ninety-three twenty-seven for a furnace. We donated seven thousand four hundred to the senior center for their windows. We've spent thirty-two thousand one hundred seventy-five for a township sign, which left with sixty-six thousand two hundred thirty-one seventy-three. And we just got another hundred and fifty-four thousand, so that's gonna bring up even more. And then we just spent the, what was it, fifty-seven thousand for the generator.
Yep.
So we're still looking at probably another hundred fifty-four thousand. And just to let everybody know, I know Amanda brought up last time about other, um, nonprofits. I reached out to the, uh, Darling World Kennels, they are nonprofit. She's, yeah, she's supposed to be getting a list, wish list together, so...
I think it was painted outside of that.
I'm sorry? Do I have Penny removed or? Yes.
I'll get her done.
So that's where we're at, just everybody knows. And we're get, we got yet to do the parking lot and the paint, so...
You're paving the parking lot?
I gotta...
We're gonna have to seal it, so...
Actually, could we actually have it paved, the whole thing?
Good, that's what you want. I'll have to, we're done for bills.
We don't have no more money coming in, do we?
No.
Or this is our last one?
Now, we may, yeah, but we may have another little bit, because last time, townships that didn't get the money, they divided it up to the townships that did.
That's why we got one fifty-four instead of one fifty-three.
Okay, so...
That's what I was already thinking.
Can, can you use that money to update computer systems and all that? That might be something...
Yeah, that's allowed.
That would be more valuable than paving the parking lot. You know, I mean, to make your jobs easier, where everything can interact.
That's cheers.
Well, I've got, I'm getting quotes for a voiceover IP, I haven't gotten them all yet and I need to talk to them, because there's a lot of new parts there. Especially since I have to, we, we signed a contract with Comcast and I have to figure out how that works, so...
I know, I need a new phone system too.
Oh my god, yes.
We're so nineties. But yeah, that's what we're working on right now and we'll bring back the new phone system as we go, you know? We've got two years to spend on money, so... But I'm just looking at, that's not, I just, I'm making things look nice. Still have that part back there, so that's still on the agenda.
Is there, just a question? Is there any way we could add in, get enough of the, and your fans, what time you're hitting your overhangs and stuff, panel too? Mr. Clark?
I can turn my bill in.
You did turn it in?
No.
Let's see, I have seven...
A hundred fifty thousand dollars.
I got, I got one company that came up, that's all I got so far. Alright, news business, number one, planning commission appointments. I put it out on Facebook and I put it out on our township page. And the first person that responded was Amy Hirsch. Um, I did get Amanda's after that and I got, uh, Mr. Sheetz, so I've got two others. So, I'm gonna appoint Amy at this time, um, for the planning commission. And I, I'm considering maybe ruling the planning commission backup membership by, so that's in the future. But, right now, I want to appoint Amy Hirsch for the planning commission appointment to replace Anita, because Mr. Pinkowski, uh, pointed out that an elected officer or employee of the township cannot serve as a member or employee of the planning commission, except that one number of the township board must be appointed for planning commission as the ex-official member that person serves for their township board term. So, that's why Anita had to be removed.
That was changed due to, that's, we got the new red books and I didn't read all the way through the new red book, that's how I found it.
Okay. So, do I have a second for Ms. Hirsch? Move by Turner, second by Sharp, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So...
Congratulations.
And also, just as note, she did resign from the compensation committee.
I think I was the only one on the compensation committee.
You were, you're the only one left.
I lost everybody in one meeting.
Wow.
It wiped out four people, I think, that night.
This isn't a government, they work for government.
Gotta be kidding me.
Yeah, even if you're a nurse and work for DA. No, no.
Really?
Yeah.
Which I thought was totally ridiculous, but...
Well, yeah, I mean, you're a nurse, it's not like, yeah.
The DNR, you can't do either.
Alright, number two, Salabim PA 116.
Um, it's all in here. This one has been around for a little while, but they needed to be combined, because the original submission, um, was not done correctly, um, because there was five acres and less. It was needed to figure out what the revenue was, but so he combined it with another parcel, so we can submit it this way. So, he combined another parcel that's contiguous, if you look at the map. The big one and the little one are now combined, not on the tax roll, but for PA 116 purposes.
Is that a little added?
Yes.
Oh, I'm ditched.
Any questions from the board? That looks like it was approved by the board, any board commissioners?
Yeah, it's been approved by the rural county board in the town and the Congress Conservation District. They had kicked it back and then I had a hard time getting ahold of Mr. Salabim and we figured it out and then we got it, we got it done. So, I couldn't send this last month, because I didn't have enough time to get the information back. And, um, the Conservation District met after we did, so I couldn't get anything back from them, so I had to wait till this one.
I'll make a motion to approve the Salabim PA 116.
Second.
Move by Turner, second by Pinkowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Day road cross tile replacements. There's a cross tile on day road between Yonch and Tubman Hill that needs to be replaced. Um, they're splitting the cost with Raisenville.
I was wondering.
Right on the, the border, so they agreed to split the cost with us. So our cost will be three thousand and fifty dollars to replace that one.
We can use it out of the road fund, no, right?
I'm sorry?
We can use it out of the road, no?
I, uh, in the budget, I put in a line item for drains, so we're good. I'll make a motion to approve three thousand fifty dollars for the day road cross tile replacement.
I'll second it.
Move by Turner, second by Sharp, roll call.
Trustee Michael Pinkowski?
Yes.
Supervisor Penny Turner?
Yes.
Treasurer Lisa Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Darryl Nichols?
Yes.
Clerk Sharp, that's myself, yes. Motion carried.
I got, oh.
I see that. Alright, number four. On the tree, there's a dangerous tree located near one-one-zero-zero-one Gramlich Road. I went out and looked at it, it's right on the verge of...
We'll just sign mine, I, I don't know where you got February.
I don't either. Um, I will, uh, anyway, I went out and looked at it, it's in the ditch line, so it's our tree. I had the road commission go out to make sure it wasn't their tree, but it is our tree. A big branch is broken out and it's leaning across the road. So if that tree goes and there's somebody driving, it could potentially hit a car driving by, it's very, very dangerous. I put it out for bits, the only bit I got was from the road commission. Um, an amount of three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to cut the tree and four hundred and fifty to grind the stump. So we can either leave the stump or just do the tree, or...
How is it not, how is that fall there?
It's in the ditch line. It's not homestead. If it was on, if it was on their property, it would be, but it's not, it's in the ditch line.
The ditch line is like the sidewalk easement kind of a thing?
It's ours. It's ours. I was hoping that, you know, it would be.
It would have been the same issue.
Just like we had to replace those ones on Tuttle Hill.
Yeah.
I mean, they redid the drain and stuff, but we had to pay for the trees. So that's where I'm at, that's the only bit I got, and it's a potential hazard, so we need to do something with it.
I make a motion that we, uh, uh, employ the Monroe County Road Commission to take the tree down and I don't know if you wanna brand the stump or what you wanna do with that, I don't know what, how big a stump they're gonna leave out there.
That's a good sized tree.
No, I mean, how high it'll.
Oh, I don't know.
But I'm not gonna just cut it off at the ground just to make it nice.
It'd be better to get rid of it, so we won't end in a ditch.
Yeah, maybe, so I'm, I'm gonna make a motion for the Monroe County Road Commission to take the tree down and also to brand the stump.
Second.
So the total amount would be three thousand seven hundred dollars. Moved by Nichols, seconded by Pankowski, and just, just the reference I did to a line item in our budget for trees, so. It should be there. No call, please.
Trustee Mike Pankowski.
Yes.
Treasurer Lisa Moore.
Yes.
Supervisor Penny Turner.
Yes.
Trustee Darryl Nichols.
Yes.
Clark Sharp, that's myself, yes, motion carries.
Number five, we had a ZBA meeting hearing for a variance last Thursday. The variance was denied. The homeowner has thirty days to appeal that variance. But I would like to get the board's approval, um, to go ahead and send everything to Bondi, just to get her prepared in case we do end up in court. Because if she doesn't do anything within the thirty days, then we're gonna take it to court. It's a barn that was, uh, built without permits, so I need the board's approval.
Would you like the, the chair of that zone Court of Appeals to give us a brief rundown? I mean, the whole board is here that was in there, I mean, Mark Chair of the committee, I mean, I'm sure he could do it in under thirty seconds.
Right.
At this time, I will not comment. Um, because of, it could be.
Potential litigation.
Litigation, so, we made our decision, and that's it.
And that.
This is, yeah, the variance was denied, the homeowner has thirty days, but the barn was built without permits, so I want board approval to.
Send to Bondi.
To send to Bondi.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Moved by Nichols, seconded by Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I think that's it, right? Second citizen's time. Barbara?
I was wondering, on Graham's Road, they enlarged a pond, did that go through the town, township at all?
No, we're investigating it.
Oh, okay. And another thing, um, I have some squatters on my property, they're called groundhogs. They're up under my front porch and I wanna know if anybody knows what I can do for them.
I'm a live trap.
I've got three live traps set in the back, but they moved from the backyard to front yard.
Smart groundhog.
Huh?
They're smart groundhogs.
They sure are. And I used to feed the chickens next door putting stuff out, but I guess I was feeding them, so they tend to stay. Does anybody know, have any idea?
This is not nice to say, but if you find a dead animal, put it there and they don't come back, they leave.
Well, I caught one in the trap.
So, you, so, you're a dead animal.
Know that I'm under your porch, they'll all be back, you know? It'll all be back.
Nobody will knock on your door for a while, is it?
Okay, okay, but I'm not, it's unreal. I mean, I wouldn't mind if they were paying rent or something, but yeah.
Feeding them too long.
I know, I stopped putting the chicken, you know, bread and stuff out for the chickens next door.
They got so, they got so big, they had to make a new hole.
Thank you. Yes, they did, they did. Thank you.
Moving on up.
You guys are doing a great job, I think.
I just wanted to say thank you for the appointment, I look forward to it.
And by the way, if anybody don't know, this is Amy Hirsch.
Nice to meet you.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to introduce myself. I already did a few, took a few of you at the planning mission, but my name is Holly Balaide. I'm running for House of Representatives for this district, um, and I just wanted to make sure everybody knew who I was. Um, I'm running because I've been to a lot of these meetings, school board meetings, township meetings, and talked to a lot of people, and the reality is people just don't feel heard, and they don't feel represented by a lot of people, whether it be city, level, state, or even federal. Um, and so regardless of what your politics are personally, I, my, my goal is to run, to represent not a party and not myself, but just my neighbors. I'm worried about my family, I'm worried about my kids' futures. I've talked to a lot of people who are just worried about their budgets and their financial stability with inflation and all this other stuff, gas prices. Um, we just need something to change, and instead of sitting over there and just feeling powerless in it, I've decided to do something about it. So, I just wanna say I've been to a lot of meetings, I've watched a lot of meetings, and between the planning commission meeting and then this meeting, I, it just, it gives me a lot of hope, because I honestly feel like you're not actually sitting up there discussing and, and like fighting about stuff that you know is really impacting real people, and I, I will say, that's not happening everywhere, it just really isn't, um, and I do appreciate that very sincerely, so that's all, I just wanted to introduce myself and thank you guys for doing that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing as none, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Yes.
Four times.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was like, oh, my god, it's.
Close.
Lisa.
Hi, nothing.
Darryl.
Nothing.
Mike.
Just my condolences, my, there's, uh, also this, that mother.
Yeah. Yeah. I have none, Lisa. Now, I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight forty-nine.
Before nine o'clock.
By Turner, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, my god, that seems like a good one.
You missed the rain today. It was supposed to rain, I was praying. I, I was, I pulled away and up the elevator, it started raining, I said, well, we got some hope tonight, so.
I'm doing good, I'm doing good. I love your.